We're hoping to avoid in the future to have an agreement and to start working with them to make sure that they literally sign off on utility plans. So, next time we have a wonderful inconsistency, we can say, "What happened?" Because right now, we're like, "What did it do?" "I don't know." "I wasn't here." "He wasn't here." "He wasn't here." So, we want to be able to have some kind of groundwork.
And as Ms. Carter said, you know, Lou Rosenberg is the counsel for the city of Florisville, and our counsel, Roger Miller, had a lot of back and forth on this. Mr. Rosenberg consulted on outside engineering firm as well. I'm forgetting which firm that he, Muggsbury as well.
Muggsbury, right.
You know, so it's been reviewed on legal counsel on both sides. It's been reviewed by M and S Engineering on the Phelps side, Burying Partners on the city side. I mean, there's, we, between the city and Phelps, have invested thousands of dollars in research to get this the way it needs to be. Again, I want to stress, this wasn't something that was unflippantly, this wasn't something that's done for convenience. Essentially, we're doing this to save your citizens' money that come in. So, right now, the way the code is written, if we're to enforce it as it's written, the construction cost and electric side would be roughly quadruple to the citizens and to the businesses coming into Florisville than it would be in virtually every other city in the state.
Mayor.
And that's an economic development nightmare, as you can imagine.
Would you retro pay those that you've worked on?
Yeah.
We'll probably make a motion.
Then, just before we entertain a motion, I have a quick question, though, because, I mean, on the letter, it says, "Copper from Phelps owned equipment to customer-owned equipment." That would stay that way. I mean, is it contradictory to what you all are saying?
Yeah.
Okay. On this letter from Mr. Berset says, "I would like to address one of the city ordinances that requires Phelps to install copper wire from Phelps-owned equipment to customer-owned equipment, but that that would stay the same."
Phelps-owned equipment.
That would be Phelps-owned equipment, so it could water.
Well, Phelps doesn't pay for the run from the house to the metering box.
Right. And charge that to a customer.
The customer pays you.
And that's why I want to change aluminum uses and costs to the customer.
Because right now, you're requiring your customer to pay roughly quadruple the cost to install it, and aluminum would suffice. And that's what we want. Again, frankly speaking, if you leave the ordinance as it is, it's not going to be a burden to Phelps. It's going to be a burden to your customers, your citizens, and your commercial folks that want to come here, because they're going to have to pick up the cost of, and have been for years, paying a higher rate than they would have to pay if they decided to build in Pleasanton or Germantown or Stockdale or Burnet or any of the places like that.
So, on the ordinance side, I know we're not on three G or whatever, but on B of the ordinance, does that have to be rewritten?
B is essentially restating what's already in there, just for everything that doesn't fit the Phelps exception, the distribution side exception, so.
According to Mr. Berset, Mr. Dickie had said.
Well, this is only from utility-owned wire on the electric distribution side. All other wiring is set on here as copper. So, once it passes the distribution.
They're requesting it that it be aluminum.
No. No.
Customer side is never aluminum.
Customer side is never aluminum. We've never asked for that.
From the lower point of the metering point to the house.
Yeah, that says copper.
Once it hits the meter in any form, it's copper.
You said there were two boxes, and then one's aluminum and copper, and there's...
It's aluminum, simply said, it's aluminum coming in to a meter, copper going out.
I'd like to entertain citizens' comments. Do you think we can vote for a motion about the made? Yeah. Do you think citizens' comments?
Is that going to take place for residential people? Is it for Florisville?
For everybody.
From the pole to the meter, that's already aluminum as it is. Some of the offices, sometimes they do run copper, right?
It's going to allow for it to be aluminum. Under the current laws, that's all supposed to be copper, right?
Right now, from the pole, from the utility pole.
From the transformer to the meter.
The Phelps people, the house, right now, they can either be running aluminum or copper, right?
Under the current law, it's supposed to be copper. We want to change it so that that can be aluminum.
In my house, it might be aluminum.
Now, there's quite a bit of aluminum construction that's been put in over the years.
There's also the different types of numbers they can use. They can use a number two, or they can use a smaller one. I don't know if it increases at the number or it decreases with the number, right?
Well, again, that's all based on load size, and that's all based on the load size of the house or the business.
So, you're going to be saving a lot of money if they're going to be changing it out, and it doesn't have to be aluminum.
Well, we're not going to be saving money. People are instructed and Bill will be saving money.
Phelps people are there, and all the poles, I mean, the Phelps people, Phelps, they have the power, and they're going to turn it to the house. That's all the field side, and you're going to eliminate the copper. So, that's going to be a thing, which in turn should be a thing for the people, right? So, you're just trying to make the ordinance where it's all the way. Order, please.
I mean, is that a motion that we need to call, please?
Yes. Now, make a motion to approve ordinance, authorizing the aluminum wiring, wiring on the city's own electric to the side of the customer's electric service point of connection.
My second. I have a motion by Councilwoman, please. Second by Councilman, please. Councilman Anthony, would you vote?
Mayor, if I can read the caption into the record.
Before?
Yeah, it has to be read, but after the motion's been filed. "In ordinance of the city of Florisville, Texas, amending section 150.32 of the city's Code of Ordinances, allowing for aluminum wiring on the utility-owned electric distribution side of the customer's electric service point of connection and establishing effective date."
Councilman Anthony, would you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Anthony, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I think you don't sit down.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you have a vote.
Oh, I'm aye.
There you go.
Three eight.
Is there a three eight consideration in action for both Phelps rate ordinance?
Give me a second to switch over my notes, please. Mayor, Councilman Andrew Turner, as you are aware, back this summer, we, Florisville Electric Light and Power System came to the city council requesting a new form of rate structure, and we requested a cross the system line two percent rate increase was approved by the council. That went in conjunction with our debt issuance project of nine million dollars. Since we have put this in place, we've had several questions and comments come to us on the way the wording of the residential tariff was written. The way it was originally written was that the, it was stated such that residential rate payers had to be in established residence. And what that did is that created a lot of consternation for some of our customers, who had historically been on a residential rate, were now reclassified into the small commercial category. And the questions that arose were for customers that have a, for example, workshop behind their house that they use for a man cave, or a hobby shop, or something of nature, but they're not using it for commercial purposes. It's really just an extension of their house or a detached garage. We've had some customers say that they put in a special meter just so they can charge an RV or two that they have, or run an RV or two that they have, which is clearly not a, if they're not renting it out to somebody, it's not a commercial property, they're just doing it to use it for, as a guest house. And so, the request has been made of several customers to take into consideration meters that may not be a bona fide, single-family residence, but also are not a commercial customer. So, we discussed this with the Phelps Board of Trustees, and they approved this new language at their Board of Trustees meeting earlier this month. And as you know, anything that deals with rates also has to have approval from the Florisville City Council. So, we're asking for a, just a simple language change to the application of the residential electric tariff. We're not asking for any rate changes, rate increases, rate decreases. Just by changing the language of this will give us the ability to take a customer who has a second meter on their property that's not a bona fide commercial meter and reclassify it as a residential meter. And so, we were asking several, the Florisville Council to approve this language. One caveat we put on here is that several of our customers throughout the county and our service territory have a water well, for example, in their pasture, and they own a lot of acreage. And they say, "Well, I'm not using that water well for commercial purposes." Well, we got to looking and did some research and some legal wrangling, and the language we put in here is that if the customer has an ag exemption on their property, by definition, they're running an agribusiness of some sort. So, we've had customers come to us and say, "Well, I've just got a water well out there to run a water trough for my cattle. I'm not really running a business." Well, the customer, that customer is telling Wilson County that they need an ag exemption, they need a steep tax break on their property taxes, and they're doing that because they're telling the county they're running a cattle business. So, customers of that nature, we would leave on the commercial rate, and that's when we have that last line in there that reads, "This rate is not applicable to additional single-phase meters where a Texas agricultural exemption has been granted." So, we have roughly, under the new rate system, we have about 1,200 small commercial customers. We think about 650 of them can be considered to be moved from the small commercial rate back to the residential rate where they were before. However, unless we agree to the rate tariff language change, I, as the general manager or our utility billing manager, don't have the authority to change customers from one rate class to another. So, this is what I'm bringing to you. It's a long-winded story, too. This is a language cleanup, nothing more, and it's just that it will allow us to take customers who have a second meter on their property, that are not operating a business or not receiving a tax break or ag exemption, to be able to reclassify it to a different rate category.
What does that do to the ones that have been charged a different rate?
What do you mean, what does it do to them?
Does it get credited back if they're overcharged?
We will have to discuss that with the Phelps Board at the next meeting. It was not determined what we would do if we would credit back under, I can tell you that the way the language written at this Phelps is not required to get it back, but it will be on the next Phelps Board agenda, the policies and procedures they want to go through for that, if we want to credit back customers who ship rate classes, or if they just want to get it right going forward. So, but that wasn't an issue, an addition, an issue for the Phelps Board to address until we got to the point where the Florisville City Council either said, "Yes, we can change the language," or "No, we cannot."
Okay, it'll be retroactive much too much?
The effective date on it before was August the 18th, which is when the meter reading started. However, the first billing didn't come till the end of September, so roughly, roughly three bills worth.
How do you determine which ones qualify for that? Do they have to come to the office?
Well, we've been working with the Wilson and Karnes County appraisal districts, and they've both provided us a list of all of their properties in the two counties that have an active ag exemption. So, we're going to cross-reference our list of small commercial customers to match them up to the addresses that the two county appraisal districts have, so we know if we see a customer at 123 Main Street with a small commercial meter, and 123 Main Street has an ag exemption, we know that one won't get changed.
But the residents have, like, a very big garage?
Well, the thing is, we haven't classified it as small commercial right now. So, if we have one at 123 Main Street that has a small commercial, and we look over here and there's no ag exemption, we'll say, "Well, this one might be eligible for switch." So, once we get that list pared down, then what we'll do, we'll have to do some field inspections, we have to call some customers, we'll do the research and let work on hiring. We're not going to sit and wait for the customers to reach out to us. But we will reach out to them with a letter saying, "If you feel that you're eligible," you know, they may contact us, of course.
I just would like to ask, Mr. Dick, you said anybody who has the ag exemption, you're required? I may have misunderstood, but you said that they are automatically put in the commercial?
No, for a secondary meter, they would be. If you have an ag exemption on your property, and your meter on your homestead will still be on a residential rate. If on that property you have a second meter, like to run a water well, for example, or the lights on a barn, for example, those would have to be under, remain under the commercial rate because...
Has to be, or is that Phelps decision?
It would be Phelps decision, because, again, you're telling the county and you're telling the state that you're running an agriculture business, that's why you're getting the tax break, therefore, it should be on a commercial rate.
I'm just going to disagree with you, Mr. Dick. Farmers' arrangements have it hard enough, isn't it?
I understand, you know, and I'm a farmer and rancher myself in Uvalde County, and so I know what you go through, but I also recognize the tremendous tax break I get from Uvalde County because of my ag exemption, and so, and the reason I do that is because I'm operating an agribusiness. So, and if I wasn't, I'd be paying much, much higher property taxes. So, I'm going to step this way. I'm a little better, please.
Does this have helping hands in there, Jim?
All accounts, Jim.
Like, that was popular, but so.
Why did that go through? Did the council general approve that?
It's not a race. It's not a rate.
Okay. And a motion?
I make a motion to approve Phelps rate ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Epple.
It has to be, it's an ordinance, so, but it has to be written in the...
It's not a resolution, it's an ordinance.
So, the caption will not be read?
Yes, it will.
By whoever makes the motion.
Where's the caption? I can put on this application.
That's the rate tariff. After that, there should be a copy of the ordinance towards the ban.
Okay, I make a motion to approve an ordinance regulating the rates for electric service to the city of Florisville Electric Light and Power System, establishing a date such amended residential service, electric tariff, language shall take effect and establishing an effective date for this ordinance.
I have a motion, and a second?
It's consecutive.
Could you say?
Okay, sir.
I'm sorry, did we... Can you say, Mr. Epple?
Aye.
Can you vote?
Aye.
Okay, I'll be favoring.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the effective date we have on here is December 24th. The reason we picked that date is we must wait 10 days from the date of approval. Today's the 11th. So, as soon as we can enact it, it's the 21st, which is a Sunday. But what we did is we put this with the start of a meter reading cycle. That way, everybody that's, the meter reads are all read on that cycle, will be effective the same instead of mid-month doing it. So, we put it as the 24th, although it's a holiday because we plan to start reading meters on the 26th, the next one.
Now, we're going to go back to E, consideration in action to approve ordinance amended chapter 150. The city's Code of Ordinances to constitute a permit for temporary solid waste roll-offs and a permitting fee for such permits.
This one goes back to the item that we held, let's see if I can hear that, be back, an executive session last time regarding the Alaway, the Republic contract. The next two, E and F, are kind of tied together, the amendment, which will remove the exclusive franchise for temporary construction roll-offs, and then the institution of a fee where you can use Belt or Tiger or whoever you wanted, but when you come in, you have to pay a hundred-dollar permit fee to the city of Florisville to be able to get a permit to utilize that temporary construction roll-off. Because Republic is our current solid waste provider, they would be exempt from that fee, and that would transfer over if, when this contract's up, if IESI comes back or whatever, then, since they'd be the municipal service provider, then they would be exempt from the permit fee. It's not Republic-specific, it's whoever's providing the service to the city.
Do you have any comments on that?
Is that a hundred dollars per job, or is that a hundred dollars for that company?
It's a hundred dollars, you as the contractor would pay it for that job. And so, then, if you've got two jobs running, you got to have a permit for each job.
It's actually tagged onto the permit, correct?
Yeah, it was a separate permit fee and a separate permit that you have to receive.
Okay. I think that would answer his question.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance to the city of Florisville, Texas, amending chapter 150 of the city's Code of Ordinances, implementing a temporary roll-off permit, establishing requirements and fee schedule for issuance of such permit, providing an exception to such fee schedule for the contracted solid waste disposal service provider, and establishing an effective date. Or, ordinance number 2014-2G.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Epple. Second by Councilman Epple, please. Councilman Epple, would you vote? Aye. Councilman Epple, please.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, we're going to F, consideration in action to approve amendment to municipal solid waste service provider agreement, removing exclusive franchise for temporary solid waste roll-offs and extending contract for additional two years.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the amendment to the contract that we kind of reached, because going back, there's been some back and forth with the contractors and with our municipal solid waste provider about this exclusive franchise for temporary construction roll-offs. This is the compromise that we reached, which states Republic will no longer be the sole exclusive provider of those roll-offs. In exchange for amending the contract to remove that, we did grant them the exception to the hundred-dollar permit fee and the extension of the contract, which was expiring September 30th, 2017. The new expiration date will be September 30th, 2019. Everything else in the contract remains the same.
With the exception of the four, you can run some compact rate?
We did discuss that, you're correct. That'll be fourteen dollars per cubic yard, and that'll be a new rate in, I think it's section 2C of the existing contract, we'll have a new rate category establishing that fee on it.
Any citizens' comments on that? I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve amendment to municipal solid waste service provider agreement, removing exclusive franchise for temporary solid waste roll-offs and extending contract for three years.
We can read, it's not an ordinance, it's a, it's a...
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Epple. Second by Councilman Epple. Councilman Epple, would you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Epple, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would oppose. Motion carries. Four zero. Okay, so, we're going to go on to I, consideration in action to appoint citizens to the Phelps Board. If anyone has any amendments. Mayor, I have a nominee. I move to nominate Ignacio Vasquez. He's a current board representative for our city on the, of the board, the Phelps Board, and he's eligible for another four years.
I have a quick question, Mr. Dick, if you could, second, nothing gets your most interest here. On the back page of the budget that you've given us, it shows a representation by each city. It shows Florisville 64%, Stockdale 18%, and Pope 18%.
Yes, sir.
But yet, on a calendar year, depending on which calendar year, and others are rotating person, Florisville only has 42% representation on the board, unless it's an alternate year where we have a third person.
The way the board is set up is a five-person board. Each city has a representative at all, at all times. The fourth spot is held by the Florisville mayor, so that gives you two positions at all times. The fifth spot, you're correct, rotates between the three cities in four-year blocks. It's four years to Stockdale, four years to Pope, and then four years to Florisville. And this was set up in 1996 on what's called the system agreement. That's the agreement that the three cities enter into, and that's when they agree upon the equity ownership level, the financial distribution levels, and the governance level, and so...
And I went back and read that, but I was just wondering, I guess it was agreed that they had over the city that table, but for us to have 64% ownership of the Phelps, I mean, you think we'd have 60%?
So, two-thirds of the time, you have 40% of the board, one-third of the time, you have 60% of the board. And why it was set up that way, again, I can't speak to that, that was long before my term here.
Is that something that could be revisited?
It could be reopened, it would require everybody to get together and agree to it and everything else. But we could try to schedule some sort of a workshop.
So, theoretically, the person with the less percentage would have the most authority? The most representative?
You have 18% ownership, but you have 40% representation.
And that's how we are now, we have two members from Pope on the council. One year from now, the Pope four-year cycle will end, so on January 1st of 16...
So, we would have to agree to, the cities or the board member?
The cities.
All the cities would have to agree to.
Yeah, I wasn't here in 96, I don't remember who was, but I understand it was quite litigious to get it to where it is now.
It was a settlement of litigation.
Yeah, it was. This was a settlement of a, essentially, a three-way lawsuit between the cities, agreed upon remediation and court process.
So, Mayor, if I may, so when is the next time that Florisville will get that third position?
That's what I was saying, in January 1 of 16, the Pope four-year cycle will end, and that will move to Florisville, so on 1-1-16, so the calendar year from 16, 17, 18, and 19, those four calendar years, Florisville will hold three positions of the five. And then, and then, starting the following year, then we'll both go back to stock.
I have a motion, and two?
Aye, second motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Epple. I am sorry, just getting too late. Councilman Epple, please, have your oath.
Yes.
Councilman Epple, please?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Three. Three, one. And one. Okay. Now, the next one, it's going to be consideration in action to appoint new members to the board in order to comply with the TBC deadline.
Are we going to table that?
Mayor, I would request that we, I'm sorry, I would request that we table it, because at the time that we actually authored the agenda, Andy had actually submitted his resignation. And so, at this point, since he has actually stepped up to the plate to do this, and we want to thank you again for doing so, I would request that we table it at this particular time.
I make a motion to appoint, appoint new members of the board in order to comply with the TBC deadline?
I would just have table three.
I got table, I'm sorry, to table three, I'm sorry, to appoint new members to the board.
I second you.
So, at this time, we still have Bill, Ms. Conley, Mr. Johnson, and Leanne?
Yes, yes.
We hope they all show up during meetings, so nobody gets sick, and nobody dies, and nobody has to sleep down.
I have the same issue with my council.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Be good, be good.
Remember that the next, next hurry up and get your...
Mayor, I have a call.
Did you all receive any applications for the board? I have a few. Did you?
They're in your package, do you see? They have them in your package. Some, do you want to review? Before it, yes.
There's a few of them, there wasn't, I mean, there's some, but not as many as that you see.
I think I missed two of them.
Yeah, and that, it's just two.
Do we need to change this? There's only five. You know, honestly, after we had some of the secretary, I kind of looked at the updates as opposed as mood, but I understand what you're saying about...
Well, I've got to be gone as soon as I can from that board. I have interest elsewhere.
I'd like to entertain that. I would definitely have a voice on the table.
I've already said my motions.
There was a second also. Castillo, so, councilman Castillo has to rescind, and then you can rescind, right?
As we went through Robert's rules, the second has to rescind before the original one.
If people want to be on the board, I don't want to stop them at this point from being on the board. I see a Stephanie Moore here. You can have many, seven. I'll make the one.
No, I'm sorry.
It was actually supposed to be five.
There's actually only five on the board.
Did you rescind your oath?
No, I didn't rescind it, I think it's still with the table.
Okay.
So then, we'll take a vote.
Well, she was the, yeah, she was the second.
She was the second, so she has to resend.
So Councilman Nieto can still vote no on the motion to table, and then it could be defeated. Well, I'm just saying, if you wanted to go through...
Go ahead.
Okay, so what are we doing?
You have a motion on the floor to table. And the second by Castillo.
I have a motion by Councilman, who are you today, Nieto? Second by Councilman Castillo to table it. Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote? Okay, Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, then I have, all opposed? Motion carries three.
No, you have to, you have to vote.
Didn't you just take?
They made a motion in a second, but they still have to be the vote.
Well, she asked Councilman Ortiz, and she asked...
But Councilman Nieto can still vote no.
I tried to resend my vote. You have to break the tie.
So the...
I just want you to, I just want you to vote.
So the mayor gets to vote.
The left half.
Mayor has to break the tie.
I expected that one right.
You're not supposed to do that. Do I have a vote that we take?
Oh, yeah, and then we'll move on to the next one.
Now, we have consideration in action to appoint new members to the board.
I have a question. Do we need to accept the resignation?
That was, that was the answer to your question, and I reading it.
I move to accept Mr. Eubanks and Mr. Castro's resignation.
I second the motion. Do we have a letter for Mr. Castro? He's verbally told me, I asked him, I mean, he's verbally told me he doesn't want to continue this time on the board.
At the meeting that I attended on Monday, he said at the meeting, and they were there to say that he would not be seeking a re-point. Did I misspeak, Miss Keaton?
There's no, I guess there's no letter to resonate, I mean, so you could just make a motion to accept Mr. Eubanks' resignation, since his letter's been submitted, and then one of us can remove Mr. Castro.
Right, and then you can do it.
So now, we're just, you can accept resignation.
I move to accept Mr. Eubanks' resignation. Motion to accept Mr. Eubanks' resignation.
Sammy's saying that Roland did terminate a resignation.
Yes, he did.
To whom?
I didn't get it.
Sorry, I've got it, I'm going to ask, I'll give it to them.
So do we need to do that one again?
No, because they're going to have to be done individually.
Right, they're still going to have to be done individually.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Should we accept his resignation? Okay, now, we still have to appoint. I have a motion to appoint...
Can I speak to the board?
Are we on the board?
Well, if we don't have a forum tomorrow, because we don't have any members, we don't, we don't have a TBC license, so we don't want to...
In which case, we'll have to have another meeting, because we already moved on from that, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
We just need three.
I'll make the motion to...
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to nominate Eubanks.
Okay, what was that?
Call the first Chris.
What, what was that?
The motion first.
I did, sorry.
It was a race, and we'll go with...
Actually, I'm okay. They wanted to plan how many...
Yeah, did, did we do the resignation of Roland Castro?
I make a motion...
Mr. Baker, if it's been turned in to the general manager...
If he has, so we can do it.
I make a motion to accept Mr. Castro's resignation that was handed to Mr. Baker from the, from the FDC.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote? Councilman Castillo, how do you vote? All opposed? Motion carries three zero.
Who did the second? Ortiz, Ms. Ortiz.
We need to put another tape in here, or?
The top?
Yeah.
There's my tapes in there, it's bad or dying.
Oh, the battery died?
It did, your tape maybe you can re-vote the four.
But I have all right here. At ten fifteen?
When did it turn off?
I don't know.
All it has is a Johnny Ray seventy-three. Does that, does that mean that this meeting is adjourned?
I think if we can't record it, we'd be in violation of state law if we didn't all get home this...
Are you serious?
No.
We can record it with a cell phone, can't we?
There is prohibited, if not, if you can't record it, then we've got a backup.
It's taken a minute over here, as far as motions and everything else.
It's in the record.
Yeah, so it's not going to let...
Yeah, I won't let you until you, until you download it.
The meeting can't be spoken about since they ain't being recorded, right?
Well, you've got a bigger recording.
He's recording it back here.
You've got to get these board members to get it back on their seats, right?
We have a newspaper that's recording it.
Yeah, there is still a visual recording of the procedure.
Well, why don't you just allow them to get back on the board, and then you'll get some new members next time.
We're going to do the same, we're going after that, okay? I'm making a nomination, I want to take one at a time, if there's only two, I'd like to make the first one. Nominate Mr. Castro. I have a motion to appoint Mr. Grayson by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman Nieto, have you voted?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz, have you voted?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries three zero. Okay, my second one is to appoint Mr. Mario Modones. Okay, I have a motion...
Real quick, before we do this, we just talked about someone coming in here and just throwing, I know you said you have four nominations, but as a courtesy to the rest of the council, we have to have some type of say, or, you know, we would like on the board also, because we're pretty much doing the same thing.
Right, and this is, this is why I wanted to try to sort out procedural things at another meeting, but I would recommend in the spirit of, you know, everybody gets to throw a nomination.
I mean, other than before, they would go down each one, and then you come back around and do each one, because if yours doesn't pass, then we can come back down.
Well, even, even if they pass, they'll still get another shot, because we technically have four spots open that are...
Two.
Well, because two are turned out, so they'll be appointed to new terms.
And, I mean, I'm all for, like, Mr. Gonzalez, he's on before, he comes to every meeting, he knows what's going on in the city of Florida, he's great, but like, you know, Mr. Baker said, Ms. Teakens said, I've heard Mr. Calley say, they've got a good continuity of what they're doing on that board, and they, you know, from the first time I was in the council, even, you know, even before I was on the council, they have come a long way, you know, a lot, a lot of times when the FDC director would come up, grab, would get it, because Mr. Feathers would go round and round, he's a great man, he's very firm, you know, good for the city a little bit, towards the end, and we started going round and round and round, and nothing was being done. You know, for the first time in a long time, there's stuff that's being done with the industrial part, you know, Mr. Baker's brought in a bunch of great ideas already, and he told me the other day at lunch, and as far as what he's doing for trade jobs, going on the city of Florida, and there's, there's a good thing working right now, and if we're looking at breaking it up, it's your decision as a council, but we've got to think about it, because there's some strong people on that board, and I think they're doing a good job. And I think there's two positions open, and Mr. Gonzalez is one, and I'm going to make my nomination, I nominate Jay Pullen to the FDC board.
We have more than one.
No, there's two positions in the...
Well, there's four, but two would have to be reappointed. So Ms. Teakens will be up for, for reappointment, if somebody wants to motion for that.
Okay, let me finish this. I have a motion by Councilman Nieto to appoint...
Jay Pullen.
Jay Pullen. May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Castillo?
No.
Okay, all opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries three zero. Now, we have two that have terms that are expired.
I'll go and make a motion to reappoint Mayor Ellen Teakens.
A second.
I have a motion to reappoint Ms. Teakens by Councilman Ortiz, second by Councilman Nieto, Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Castillo, how do you vote?
No.
I vote and reappoint Mrs. Teakens, because I too feel that they've done a great job, and I've been to some of their meetings, and they're, I mean, they're definitely under my charge.
Now, their board selects their position.
Yeah, they're all, we still got one more, who's the, the other individual?
Right, Ram Ramirez.
Ram Ramirez is up for reappointment as well.
So, I'm sorry, did you vote me out or not?
No, you're, you're reappointed.
Reappointed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I guess, Councilman Ortiz, you, if you'd like to nominate somebody, you can, or you can pass the nomination.
I want to want to get a, one of Sherry's appointments.
What did he say?
I haven't even had time.
You can hold off on the act.
Yeah, hold off.
I have one, Mr. Johnson. Andy Johnson.
There's nothing against being on the four and forty-eight one times, far as, you know.
No, because you have one person who's got two positions.
Two positions, yeah. Ray Lambert.
Lambert is on two boards. Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo to appoint Mr. Andy Johnson. May I have a second? Second by Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Nieto, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Three one.
Are we done with the four meetings?
That's all four positions.
Congratulations to the appointees. We look forward to working with you. Okay.
Ram wasn't reappointed to the...
No, Andy Johnson was appointed to his...
So do we need to officially remove him then?
No, because he turned out.
Okay.
So he's...
Okay, now we're going to go on to L, excuse me, from which position was Mr. Gonzalez to Mr. Castro's?
Yes.
That'd be the, again, I don't think there's official place numbers.
There's no official rate, like, more than...
No.
It was both.
That's something that we want to do at the resignation, and we can do that in a special meeting.
These are at large, I mean, they could come up any...
You can appoint every meeting if you have to.
You can reappoint, appoint every...
They're all two years, right?
That's the, that's the term.
Yeah, so theoretically, it'd be an undetermined term.
But that's what you're running for, two years, you can, you can remove us anytime you want to, that's fine, I understand.
Correct. So if we get on and next week, or next meeting, you decide that Mr. Gonzalez, you know, needs to go home, have some more free time, you could appoint somebody else to his spot next meeting if you want.
But, but it'll be, it'll be in the, at the remainder of his two-year tenure.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Which is an unexpired term.
The reason for the question, see, one of the members is coming up before the end of the term, so you're not just throwing out the rest of his term.
No. Right, the, the two, that, the Mr. Castro and Mr. Eubanks' spots...
They already turned out.
They'll be...
No, they're, Mr. Eubanks is actually resigning, isn't he?
He's turned out.
The, oh, the terms ended on Tuesday, right, the ninth?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's actually terminated.
Yeah, he turned out for his...
And he did resign, but he resigned because he didn't want to be considered again.
For reappointment.
His way of doing it was resigning.
So we didn't actually officially have to accept, so to go to Mr. Castro's thing, we didn't have to accept his, because he turned out, so he's just not being reappointed, he's just not being, for future reference. We made it through, procedurally, we're okay.
Okay, can I go on, Helen?
Please.
We're on L, which is consideration in action to approve a special meeting for December twenty-ninth, twenty-fourteen, the campus runoff election.
And we only need two council members for this one, under the rules of the election code, we don't need a full four.
Can I make a motion to approve a special meeting for December twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, campus runoff election?
I second. I have a motion by Councilman Nieto, second by Councilman Castillo, Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now, we're going to go on to M, consideration, consideration in action to approve Friday, January the second, twenty-fifteen, as an additional city holiday. That's on a Friday, right after the holiday.
What are you saying, for every year this, this is your?
Just this year, because next year it moves over to the Thursday, Friday.
What, what, what day's, what day is the first and second next year?
It'll be, it'll, next year's holiday would be Thursday and Friday.
Next year.
Next year.
Friday's the best day to go back to work, it's Friday.
I have a calendar here somewhere.
I'm off that day, if that helps anybody.
Staff came and asked me in reference to, asking for the day off, I told them I couldn't give them the holiday, because the council votes on all holidays in August sometime, we set the calendar, and I think right now we have fourteen days, we made some changes that will happen this year because of peanut festival, and so staff has asked, because I think we probably will be operating with a skeleton crew for that Friday that falls after the New Year's Day, because we have New Year's Eve and New Year's Day off, but we won't have the day after.
On twenty-sixteen, Monica, it's on a Friday, the first fall's on a Friday.
Right. Twenty-fifteen, the last day of twenty-fifteen is a Thursday, Friday, so it was kind of like what you tried to do this year with Christmas and gave the Friday off, that's what they were asking about, because remember, we took one from October to give us an extra day?
Right now, they're, they're off Thursday only?
Thursday and...
Then Wednesday.
Wednesday and Thursday, yeah, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day.
So you're going to want Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
Yes.
Three days off?
Well, we gave them, we had our Thanksgiving luncheon, just before Thanksgiving.
May I have a citizen's comment on this, anybody?
Nothing more. Most people, when we, when we are open on a holiday week, they are shocked that we're working. They expect us to be off that whole week.
Good one.
But if you're finding it work, you could use that time to get caught up.
That's true.
I mean, if you swallow, that's what we do.
It will take a lot to get caught up.
Mayor, I like my vote. I move to approve the Friday, January the second, two thousand fourteen, as a... I move to approve the Friday, January the second, two thousand and fourteen, as an additional state holiday.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, second by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman Ellen, how do you vote?
Yes, you.
Thank you.
Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries three zero, one. The last one. Okay, the last one is four A, pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-one-two of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to review the operations of the municipal court of City of Florsville, and receive information and legal advice concerning the scope of operation of the municipal court, the duties of the municipal judge, the municipal prosecutor.